Make a note that all president and council. Would the FFA like to lead us in the budget of leaders tonight, please?
My pleasure, ladies, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for that. I need a motion to approve and adopt the agenda, please.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and second, inward discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I heard seven zero. Board report?
Into the February edition of the Missouri School Boards Association Board Report, we begin with a look at the governor's State of the State address last February twenty eighth. Governor Kehoe delivered his first State of the State address, which laid out his legislative agenda. Securing Missouri's future was the theme of Governor Kehoe's address. Governor Kehoe's budget recommends a $200 million increase for the foundation formula and over $370 million to fully fund the state's commitment to school transportation needs. For teachers, the budget includes $33 million to fund teacher salaries. While the governor does recommend a $200 million increase to the foundation formula, that still leaves it underfunded by $300 million.
You're going to hear it in the media, so you might as well hear it from me first. While it's clear our support for K through twelve education is a record investment in the largest we've ever seen, we are not fully funding the formula. And while we are committed to making good on the funding commitments passed by the legislature last year, this budget does not include an additional $300 million liability that was imposed on us by an administrative body.
The governor is also asking for $50 million in state general revenue for school vouchers and $7 million for capital improvements at charter schools. The combination of an underfunded foundation formula coupled with a diversion of funds to charter schools and unaccountable voucher programs is concerning. MSBA's chief advocacy officer, Brandt Shields, says that with so much talk around ed reform, MSBA will be spending a great deal of time focusing on education funding and accountability.
Coming out of seven twenty seven, priority number one has to be education funding.
Absolutely.
You know, one of the promises that was made as they were expanding school choice last year prioritization, and their selling point to many members who were kind of uneasy about voting for seven twenty seven minutes, but don't worry, public education is going to get so much more money out of this. So, I mean, we are here to say, we are here to make sure that education is fully funded. We believe that the best accountability for schools happens at that local level, and we get very concerned when hard-earned tax dollars that come from our citizens and they go to places that are not held that same level of accountability. And we want to make sure that if a dollar is going out from the state, whether it goes to a public school or a private school through NSA or a charter school, that they are held to high, high standards.
The governor's executive budget recommendations are the starting point for the legislative appropriation process. MSBA is now working with legislators to support MSBA's priorities as they involve funding beyond the governor's recommendations for public education. As the appropriation process now begins, your advocacy efforts will be essential to protect funding from Missouri's public school students.
You know your district best. You know how policy is going to impact you at a local level, and making those personal connections for legislators is really the opportunity to impact. Because when Brandt goes and has conversations with them, he's offering a statewide perspective, which is important, but most often, those emotional, personal conversations about your local communities is what's going to sway the mindset of a legislator.
As the legislative session progresses, we will keep you updated on these developments again this year through our Legislative Voice newsletter, sent to members via email each Friday during the session, through critical issue alerts, and MSBA's Spring Advocacy Series. The Spring Advocacy Series helps you connect the classroom to the Capitol and make an impact in shaping education policy. The large class of freshman legislators in the Missouri House and Senate means your insights as a local school leader will be critical, and your connections can make the difference. Log on to Advocacy Lunch and Lunch for the latest updates in the legislative session and plan to attend MSBA's Advocacy Day and Student Showcase with your school board to meet your legislators at the Capitol on March eleventh. For more information about all of these events, visit the MSBA website. MSBA is also pleased to sponsor School Board Recognition Month in March. It's a great opportunity for school districts and communities to recognize the great work of school board members and the important role local boards of education play as leaders of our public schools. Visit the MSBA website for ideas to celebrate and materials created to help recognize the vital role these public officials play in the education of Missouri's children. That's it for this month's edition of the MSBA Board Report. Thanks for allowing us to have some time at your board meeting, and we'll see you in March for the next MSBA Board Report.
Anybody want to add anything? Okay, moving on. Public comments. Doug, we'll let you speak during your agenda item. So, you still want to speak now or not?
No, no thank you.
Okay, move on. Our next item is FFA. Ms. Kimery and the FFA chapter have a presentation for us.
Okay, we like the margin, guys. We can always look at this board over here, too. Okay, so from the corner, I first want to say thank you, guys, for having us here tonight. We're not just going to talk about FFA, but as our ag program as a whole, kind of where we've been the last couple of years and where we are now. If you don't know me, my name is Kelsey Kimery. I've been teaching ag and being an FFA advisor for the past 12 years, but this is my third year here at Wright City. I'm happy to be here. To tell you a little bit about my role, I'm obviously the ag teacher, but also the FFA advisor. And my role as an FFA advisor is to do just that, is to advise and to guide. FFA is known as the largest student-led organization in the world, and so I try my best to let them do their voting as the officers and as the members. They plan agendas for the meeting. I oversee all of that. They are planning the events. I, again, oversee all of that, and of course, sometimes say, "It's not the best thing." Yeah. So I guide them in two different things, but they do a great job. So that's kind of just my role. I also help them become the best leaders, the best public speakers they can be as that. So I will let them introduce themselves, their names and their officer positions. Danielle, if you want to start?
I'm Danielle Freud, and I'm a historian.
My name is Tate Micus, and I'm a parliamentarian.
My name is Reagan Begy, and I'm the first vice president.
I'm Alyssa Schulte, the second vice president.
My name's Kayleen Sosa, and I'm the sentinel.
My name's Vado Sosa, and I'm the reporter.
So the first thing I want to introduce, I know, make this way over here. The first thing, you're fine, you're fine, is the three-circle model. In the national ag ed world, we use this, and we strive to get every student involved in every aspect of our three-circle model. So we have classroom instruction, SAE, and FFA. So we believe that if we can get every student in all of those aspects, that they will learn the most in ag education. So the first thing we'll talk about is what we're doing in our classroom.
Yeah, so our ag program offers a variety of classes. So our freshmen, they take Agriculture One, which focuses primarily on animal science and kind of the intro to FFA. Ag Science Two, that's for sophomores. That kind of goes more in depth with FFA and more in depth with plant science. After your freshman and sophomore year, you open up the opportunity to take your fish and wildlife classes, your greenhouse class, and your ag construction. This has all been possible as one ag teacher. Now, the students who take three ag credits also earn one science credit. We have been blessed to have the second ag teacher in the last few years. With this opportunity, we have been able to have ag communications class, and I'm personally in that class right now. And I've been able to sharpen my communication skills, give speeches. Like Olivia Micus in this picture right here, she's reading a book to the little kids. So it's lots of fun things we get to do. And then we also have, Mr. Elidge goes over to seventh and eighth grade and gets to teach the younger kids more about FFA and kind of get them ready for their next years of high school. We also offer advanced animal science, which is for I've also took, and you learn more about, more in depth about the anatomy, livestock judging, more about the production side of things. And then also, with the second ag teacher, we've also been able to have three sections of Ag One, which is a huge step for us. And we also offers more to just the Wright City High School students in general and gets them more excited about taking ag classes, having more of these fun classes involved, too.
All right, our agriculture program student enrollment has increased over the years, starting at 2021 and 2022, ninety-three members enrolled in ag classes. And 2024 to 25, to 135 students enrolled in high school ag classes and 128 students enrolled in middle school ag classes. So that's 263 students in total. This is an unduplicated number, so that just means, I'll use myself as an example, I'm enrolled in greenhouse and ag communications, but I'm only counted once on this chart. So there's multiple high school students that take various ag classes at one.
Okay, so that's kind of about our classrooms. So we're going to go into our supervised agricultural experience projects.
Okay, so SAE is a project that a student has outside of the classroom that relates to agriculture. Having an SAE is a requirement of agriculture courses, and every student's project is unique to their own interests and resources that they have. So students track their time that they're involved in their SAE and their financial side of things in their SAE record books.
Okay, so this one, you have to hover over each one. Hopefully, it works. So one thing that the ag teachers do every year is we turn in state reports to DESI. And so we collect a bunch of data from their financial record books that they've been keeping all year. Yes? And so this is kind of an interesting breakdown from 2023. I'm just still wrapping up 2024's report. But 20% of our students had entrepreneurship-type SAEs. So I will let Reagan talk about her entrepreneurship SAE.
So my entrepreneurship SAE consists of sheep and cattle and entrepreneurship production, where I raise and sell high-quality show lambs that not only compete at the county level, but at the state and national level, too. Our company strives to get back to our community by selling to local four H and F fairs.
Okay, so another person with entrepreneurship. Danielle has multiple aspects, but why don't you tell them about your entrepreneurship?
The entrepreneurship side of my SAE includes raising and showing pigs at the fair.
And then Tate, you want to talk about your SAE?
Yeah. My SAE consists of working and operating on a family farm, pumpkin patch and tree farm. I also have a small cattle operation. I also have a small cattle operation that shows pigs across the nation.
So if you want to go hover over the next one. Twenty-five percent of our students have a job, whether that's paid or unpaid experience. So Alyssa, you want to talk about your SAE?
Yeah, so at my house, I'm not able to keep or raise livestock. So I work at a restaurant called Steph's Pizza. We might have had it, we're good. So I build relationships with customers, collect money, make food, do a lot of different prep work, and I'm able to still have an SAE that I can use for my FFA record book.
Fourteen percent of our students had exploratory-type SAEs. Those are really for your kids who are a little bit younger, not sharing where they're, not sure on where they want to go. So they're exploring their options. So they might do an interview with someone in agriculture. They might do a one-day job shadow. They might just research more into an ag career. So it's more of a surface-level project, not a bad one. Everybody has their own resources, but then after that, we can guide them maybe into a larger project as they get older. And then the last one, most of our kids up here also have this, but where they have more than one type. They fall into more than one category. So I will let Kayleen, if you want to talk about your multiple aspects.
So I personally have an entrepreneurship and a placement SAE. With my placement side, I work at MFA Co-op and Pumpkin's Lloris Seasonly. And then on the entrepreneurship side, I raise show goats and chickens, which I also sell for market and eggs.
So I also have multiple types of SAEs. Starting with my entrepreneurship side, I raise and show breeding stock and market goats at the fair. And for my placement side, I work at Wright City Meats, where I package and seal meat products. And I also have a seasonal job at the pumpkin patch.
So along with that data, it gives me some cool numbers. So in 2023, students in the Wright City agriculture courses had a combined SAE income of $211,394. This does not include the kids in Ag One classes, which is about eighty of our kids in our classes. So that's mainly just the sophomores, juniors, and seniors. All right, last but not least, FFA.
So our FFA membership, starting in 2021 and 2022 year, we had thirty-two members that were enrolled. And if we jump to 2024 and 2025, we have got an over seventy-five member this year that's enrolled. So that's pretty awesome. Some recent accomplishments that we have had is, in April, we had several CDE teams made it to state and did well at various contests. And then the Wright City FFA chapter also earned the National Superior Chapter Award at State Convention. And then Bailey Love also earned her state degree as a junior. Reagan Begy earned first place at Area Five Sheep Entrepreneurship Proficiency Award. And in August, we got to participate in Battle of the Chapters, and we received first place at that. In October, Corbin Choney earned his American FFA degree. And in November, twelve members competed at the Area Five Fall Public Speaking, and six of them advanced to districts. This month, Danielle Freud will be competing at state level at the Missouri Pork Producers Expo with her speech. Bailey Love is currently serving as our Area Five FFA officer. And here's some pictures down here of the awards that I kind of talked about.
And I'd like to add something. Since we've made this presentation, we've had some more very exciting news. Last week, I took their record books and their applications to the judging at the area level. So we are taking, what is it, six, hopefully, six state degrees. They've all passed at the area level. So I called Mr. Cook the other day, who some of you know, he's the old ag teacher here. And the most that they've ever had was four for Wright City. So if we get all six through the state level, we hope, that would be kind of awesome. Another, some of the more exciting news at that night, Reagan Begy here earned Area Five Star Farmer. The last time someone from Wright City earned that was in 1983, which was Tim Dunneke. So we wish her luck as she goes and competes at state to try to come, become, you know, Missouri Star Farmer. So that's fantastic. And then one person that's not here, Maddie Knopel, got first place in equine placement for her proficiency award. And then this month, which she actually did just two days ago via Zoom, we were planning to go down to the Missouri Pork Expo, but they offered the Zoom option because we didn't have school. So Danielle zoomed from her house, and she presented an amazing job to the Pork Expo judges. And then they called her and let her know that she received third in state.
So with all of our accomplishments, we do a lot of events, not only in the community, but in a national level. So speaking of national level, this past fall, we went to a national convention held in Indiana. We took twenty students, and we bussed with Morton. There, you were able to talk with different FFA members all around the nation and just really connect with people that have the same interest and likes as you. Along with, in the fall, we have our annual Farm Warming Dance with our pork. It's a great way, not only for FFA members to come and have fun, but for the whole entire school as well. And then also, in the fall, we have our Fall Speeches, which is where Danielle went to compete on. There are all of the, yeah. As well is, in FFA, we like to keep all of our members in the know, so we always have our monthly meetings to update them and let us know what's happening. And then recently, in the summer, we, for the first time, went on a national parks trip, a couple of us, in the west, and it was super fun. I went to, that's the Grand Canyon, I believe. Yeah?
France Canyon.
We did go to the Grand Canyon, too.
Along with keeping tradition, we are, always like to make an appearance in our homecoming parade. So there we are. We like to involve all the members and get, hopefully, build the numbers as the years go on. And along with our FFA chapter, we like to be in the community. So there we are, breaking leaves at the cemetery. We like to do community service as much as we can, and if not necessary.
Okay, so if you ever are curious about what is coming up in FFA, we have this important days calendar. If you want to click that, Alyssa, to show them that. This is linked on the high school website. I passed out paper copies, but I'm always trying to update this one. So if you ever want to know what's kind of going on next, you can scroll all the way down and see the upcoming months and what's happening. And then yellow are the changes that I've had to make, as they can be canceled. So we just have a lot coming up as our career development event, leadership development event, leadership development event season is coming up. So I just wanted to show you guys that, that that's always on the high school website. And then the other link there, which you don't have to click on it or not, but I keep a Google Calendar also separate from the district calendar so that our members who are hardcore FFA can just go to look at FFA on a Google Calendar, too. And that is linked on our high school website as well. Well, we thank you, guys, for letting us speak. Thank you, guys.
Does anybody have any questions for our FFA members?
I don't have any questions. I'm just so happy to see the numbers going up. I know when we had a big discussion about finding a second FFA advisor, that was a lot of discussion, because, and props to our staff who found it on that, because not a whole lot out there anymore. But just so happy to see our numbers climbing. And yeah, I follow on Facebook, and it seems like you guys are knocking it out of the park all the time. There's always different awards, and it's so exciting to see so many of our kids getting state awards, or their state degrees.
I'm going to have you guys center. And then the board, if you guys want to be, take part in this picture, that would be great. You guys just want to stand behind them? And then everyone just leave enough room for the board members to be right behind them.
Stand in the chair.
If you guys all just want to go like this?
Then they can't see you.
Wonderful. Thank you, guys.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I want to thank Ms. Kimery and her students for being in. You know, along with Mr. Elidge, Ms. Kimery has really developed a program kind of beyond where my dreams were would be. So that's been really thrilling to see that happen as we move into our new space, too. There are so many great things going on at the high school. It's always tough, you know, to narrow it down to one thing that you want to present with. And as we've moved into the new building, too, with our new spaces, the collaborative spaces that we have, the room that kids have in there, you know, what it's like in the cafeteria and in the hallways, the coffee shop going on, there's just a buzz. The kids are so excited by everything that's going on there, as are our teachers and other adults. So again, that makes it a little tough sometimes to narrow down. But ag, what I'd seen develop, Ms. Kimery's work, along with Mr. Elidge, too, I thought that deserved, you know, honoring tonight. So that's really exciting to see, and their success as well. I do have a few awards to hand out tonight. First off, for Outstanding Volunteer Award, if I could have Tony Pico, please come forward. So Tony has been instrumental in developing youth wrestling in Wright City, and now is coaching on the high school level, too. But I've watched this over years. I don't know if you noticed, but I, you know, I kind of see that, how it's developing, and seeing them there when they're in the high school, working. And, you know, a lot of times, you'll hear people say in different programs, "What we need is a youth program, a feeder team." And people will say that. Tony backed it up, you know, helped start this and get it going. And that's paid dividends, kids getting interested in wrestling and then wanting to do it at the high school level. He also has done fifth-grade camp. I know that's an elementary thing, but willing to help out, you know, at every turn. And, you know, is growing in kind of coaching the sport, too, right, with Wright City. So we couldn't be more thankful for his efforts with wrestling and beyond on behalf of the students of Wright City.
Thank you. It's been really incredible to watch the program for a long time, so.
So there's a couple firsts here on distinguished alumni. I have two that I'm giving out. We've always only given out one. And another first, the first recipient, the distinguished alumni, is Leroy Micus. And that's going to make him the first husband and wife distinguished alumni, right? And so kind of how I came to this one, is, you know, we honored Ardell a while back, a year and a half, so two maybe, right? And I know Leroy, he never said anything to me, and I see him at every game. He never said anything, like, "Oh, dude, I'm doing the same things here, too," you know? Having kids out to the pumpkin patch and all that, supporting every event and everything Wright City leads to a goal, just like I said with Ardell. I see him at every game, and they're always so nice to me.
We're missing one tonight.
I know. At first, they weren't going to come because of the game, it was a well school. But then, you know, Ardell, "It's a little cold, baby. We'll come and get an honor tonight with us." So again, along with Ardell, Leroy, I can't thank you enough for everything that you do on behalf of Wright City. And then my last distinguished alumni award goes to Vicki Zuhon. Vicki, if you could come up here so I can embarrass you, really scare you. I have known Vicki since I came to Wright City. She has been a great family friend, right, and a great friend to Kelly. She not only graduated from here, and one thing, you know, her dear friend Pam Hamba received the distinguished alumni award before her, so now she can't hold that over your head. But you know Pam, she's probably brought it up before, right? But also, Vicki spent twenty-nine years here working in the Wright City School District, was a mentor to my wife, too, and has just been on many boards, supportive of everything Wright City as well. And, you know, it was the last time I was going to be able to do this, and I thought, "Well, we're going to have two," and I'm going to honor Vicki, because I appreciate every team she does on behalf of Wright City and our kids.
Thank you. It was our honor to work here and really to be in the community, so I'm honored. So thank you very much, so.
And I know, you know, Larry is an alumni, too. I didn't get in tonight, Larry. I'm sorry, though. We're going to give work for you.
We can write his name.
Congratulations.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Maddie.
Thank you, everyone. And Mr. Brooks, thank you for everything you've done for us over the years.
Thank you.
Anybody want anything? Academic calendars. Amy?
Yeah, I'll turn this over to Dr. Wei, who worked with a group and a committee, and Elizabeth, and Veronica, and Holly. There's a lot involved, so I'll leave the calendar over to Dr. Wei.
Yeah, you can go to the second slide. You can see everybody on the committee there. But like Doc said, you know, Holly and Elizabeth and Veronica worked hard on all this calendar, so we'll make sure they're honored for that. If you go to the next slide, where we talk about the process, basically, in December, we started meeting. Elizabeth and Veronica and Holly and I kind of came up with about three versions for our, our staff to look at, our committee to look at, sorry. And then we kind of talked about it, and then we got those down to two versions, and then we sent it out to our staff for a survey between meeting one and then meeting two. In meeting two, we come back, look at that survey, look at what the answers are, and then kind of come up with some recommendations and bring them to the board here. So if you remember, last year, the big change to our, our calendar last year was we went from one hundred and seventy- from 171 days to 169 student contact days. That was big. We kind of based that off of our teacher surveys saying that they needed a little more time and so we took two of those days back to help them out. And then you can see last year's results, about 60% liked option A and about, I guess, 39%, 40% liked B there. And so that's where we are last year. We are looking for a couple changes this year. One of them is we're looking to do two years, if you guys approve, the 25, 26 and 26, 27 calendar year. We'd like to stay with 169 student days. These are the two options that we brought forth to our staff to look at, draft A and B. As you can see, A, the spring break kind of aligns more with our VOTAC kiddos in Washington. Spring break kind of coincides with Easter break a little bit and our last day is the 21st in option A. Option B, it was a little, sorry, spring break was a little different and then our last day was one extra day because we couldn't piggyback off of Easter break there. And the results, as you can see, about 72% liked option B with about 28% for option A. So again, kind of overwhelming there, people liked option B better. Going to 26, 27, it's a little more difficult in the fact that Labor Day is pushed back so far and so, you know, we can only start 20 days before Labor Day. And so if you look at those options, the thing that stands out to me is those last days of school. You know, and the other options was the 21st, 22nd, now we're pushing back to the 27th, 28th. There's really not much we can do to try to get all of our days in. Option A was the spring break around the 19th, 15 through the 19th. Option B, spring break around the 22nd, 26th, again coinciding with Easter break. This one wasn't so overwhelming. It was really 52 to 48% for option B. So again, option B for 25, 26, option B again for 26, 27. The only other thing we wanted to throw at you tonight was one of our survey questions that we went out, because of the meetings with our committee, we have historically started on a Tuesday every year. And so we put the question in, and I guess this really came from elementary more than anybody, was hey, we really didn't have a fall break and so how can we get like a day for teachers? And so we talked about it and we said, hey, instead of starting on a Tuesday, we could start on that Monday, but we had, we said it couldn't be like a late start Monday to start the year. We've got to go a full day, we've got to get in a routine. And so we threw that question out to our staff and said, hey, if we start on Monday, what do you think? 60% said, yeah, start the school day on a Monday so we can get a fall break day in. 19% said, no, start it on Tuesday, looks like we normally have, and 20% said, I really don't care one way or the other. So our recommendations that we're bringing to you tonight is for 25, 26, starting on that Monday, having spring break on the 23rd to the 27th with our last day being May 22nd. And then the same thing for 26, 27, starting on that Monday and you can kind of see the, how they break out with our last day being May 27. And again, we're going for two years instead of the normal one year that we've been asking for a long time.
And I assume that's just, that's for planning purposes, it's easier to plan? I've always worked in districts where there's two years. It just provides parents at least a little bit more flexibility for those families that are planners, you know? Sometimes families plan trips with other family members, like looking really far ahead. So we're just trying to offer that to our community. I will say in most districts I've worked in, we've had a two-year and that's not to say then at the beginning of next year, or you know, let's say in the middle of next year, we look ahead and we're like, oh, we need to tweak this. It's, it's not uncommon to come back, it's not moving something big, but it's like a day here or there that could happen, but the majority, you know, like especially those spring breaks, a lot of families like to travel or do things. We're just trying to offer that to our families as a courtesy to, if they like to look ahead.
Do you have any more questions?
Let's see, so we, so we are adding an extra day over the fall break that we did not have last year, which I think is a great idea and I would think what is good attendance because families also like to, to travel during that time as well, so. No more questions.
Any questions?
No.
Mary?
No, I am not. I'm good, thank you.
Kyle?
My only concern is with the second year option B button up to with Easter break. I know we had it last year, but spring break and Easter break at the same time does not, in my opinion, allow families much of an option to, to plan a vacation and my concern is attendance around that time. The, the survey was, the difference was five employees out of the 166 folks that responded to it. So yes, there's a majority, a barely majority and I, I would prefer option A for the second year over option B because of that.
So I think the third Saturday in March, is that Holy Saturday the next, next year for Easter?
Are we talking about next year or the year after?
Well, the year after that, the year that, the year that Kyle's talking about.
There you go.
The reason I ask that question is because, you know, Amy and I talked about this a little bit and historically, spring break has always started the week after Bloom Gold. So like if you look at spring break this year, we're having Bloom Gold on that Saturday for March 16th and then, you know, then spring break's the next week. Next year, same thing, that third Saturday in March, we're having Bloom Gold and then there's the spring break. And then that following year, you know, you said we're, you know, the question that we're going to have to ask, I'm assuming, I don't know what Bloom Gold's going to do for that year if, if that 26, 27 year, excuse me, if that's going to be, if that's when they're going to do Bloom Gold, if that third Saturday coincides with Holy Saturday for Easter Sunday. I don't know what they're going to do, but are they going to move it up? And then I could see then keeping with tradition where they did Bloom Gold on the 13th, which would be the second Saturday, then doing spring break the week of the 15th, because that would again, keep with our tradition about how we do Bloom Gold and then spring break versus if they're going to do spring break, I mean Bloom Gold on the 20th and then keeping with the tradition of doing like that. But it looks like with, based upon the calendar, the 28th of March in that year is going to be Easter. So it sounds like Bloom Gold will keep the 20th. And so, you know, that, that was, you know, from a historical perspective, that's kind of what we've always done. And so that's kind of why I like what they've done here is because they kept the tradition of Bloom Gold on Saturday and then the spring break's the following week.
And I recognize that, but the Bloom Gold being on that Saturday versus what vacations parents across the district might take isn't necessarily correlated is what I'm getting at is when you button up the, the two holidays, I'm just concerned about what kid going with attendance and the days going into it or coming out of it is all. That's all I have.
Aaron, what do you think?
Um, I think that we, what Mary always says, we have a committee and we trust that committee. I'm super concerned about a 20-day difference in semester length for our instructors. You know, with AP classes and college classes dual enrollment, you know, kids that are doing dual enrollment, I don't know how that works. I'm, I'm a little concerned about being able to give quality instruction for the entire curriculum in 76 days. But I'm not an educator, so I will defer to the experts here, but that's my biggest concern about this calendar.
The only way you make up for that is you extend first semester into after January and.
Which happens all the time.
It's hard on the kids.
Hey, forget everything you learned.
Right, but 76 days is, I, I feel like that's so crunched to get all of the material in. And then, and then so if you're, if you have, if you've got your lessons first semester, second semester, do you have to completely redo that pacing for second semester because now you've got to fill 20 more days?
And this is why the state legislature should not be involved in both control of calendars. This is ridiculous.
100%. But again, that's my concern, but you guys knew what you were doing when you put the calendars together and I'm going to trust that.
So Holly, can you address what Aaron brought up, please?
Um, it's, it's not ideal. I mean, it would, it would potentially change some of the pacing to, to make that work. Our, I mean, our curriculum is always a, a living document that we do make adjustments to and I know there's been a lot of, there's been a lot of passion about not moving the semester end date to after break as well and that's been kind of hard on folks. So it would be something that, I mean, knowing this far in advance, it gives time to work on that pacing, but it would, it's just, it stinks that the holiday is still late that year. So in some ways, some things, you know, we were kind of, not forced, but it was kind of harder to develop this time.
Dr. Salvo, what's your recommendation?
My recommendation is to follow the committee, the committee's recommendation. I will say oftentimes I've, I've heard, you know, that kids don't like to, when we think it from a kid's perspective, to take finals after winter break. That has caused our students, or it's caused students some anxiety or stress instead of a break over winter break because they're worried about studying or staying, you know, in the loop with that curriculum. So from students in previous districts that I've worked in, it causes the students a lot of stress and when we've spoken to them, they would prefer to end it. So for them, in their mind, it's winter break and then I come back, it's a leverage point and it's a clean start to a new semester.
That's exactly what I have always heard from my own kids and my grandkids.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve the calendar for the next two years as presented.
I'll second that.
There's a motion and second. Any more discussion? All those in favor, aye. All those opposed, I heard seven zero. Okay, next one is policy review. This was the policy committee. Beth, would you like to lead this since you're in the policy committee?
I'm going to, Kyle, Sarah's going to lead more than I think. Sarah Lee Ford. Our meeting this year was in December, which is a very busy time for me with work, so I had to miss that. So I'm going to defer to Kyle.
So Kyle, would you please lead this?
Yeah, so this year the policy committee, that being myself, Beth, Heidi and various other individuals within the district reviewed facility policies this year. The majority of the changes that you see in front of you is from attempts to, to clean up some common language within these very similar policies to standardize them as best as possible. Again, you would be amazed how much state law is out there that drives specific language for very, very specific nuanced things that districts must follow. So there is a legitimate reason why specific language exists in certain sections of these policies, but there are other sections that wasn't driven by state legislator, state, state law or, or actions that state legislators have voted on historically that we were able to adjust and standardize just to drive some consistency so when we're pulling up policies to review, it's just, it's clearer. So that's primarily the Fed, FE, F1, FEK and FED. And FB and FC, the, there were some minor changes in there as well. So we can certainly pull up any of these that you guys would like to take a closer look at and build from there.
Aaron, anything?
Me?
Yeah?
No, no, thank you.
Heidi?
I do not have anything.
Mary?
No.
Dave? How did you go about making the changes Kyle? Did you consult MSBA? Did you consult the attorney? How did you go about that?
Well, it started with me reading everything for about six hours at home and taking notes and then passing those along to poor Elizabeth, who then consolidated all of that and then at that point they reached out to MSBA who offers the, the policy authoring services and legal to review and ensure that we're still in alignment with the state, state law.
Got you. Thank you. Beth?
I don't have anything else to add. I was, I was okay with where we landed on all of these.
So can you pull up FEF1, please?
Of course.
Well, and Kyle, you know, I asked, I asked this question in my, in my question, but there's a section and then I just want to point out that payment and retainage section that we're getting rid of, can you kind of just go through that, please?
So actually, when I reviewed this policy, I really liked this language and my initial thought was we, this needs to be in all of our facility policies. However, legal's advice is that it is impossible to, there, there's so many nuanced ways that the district can contract with various entities and to attempt to have any language that kind of binds that at a policy level is really unrealistic. So the recommendation was to, to remove it and let those specific contracts that we sign with the entities drive the payment and, and retainage, you know, legalities and instead add a simple language that, hey, in any instance of, we, we should be, we should be advising, you know, legal if any questions come up with the payment and retainage. So it was a, it was, it was a good argument and that's why it's recommended that this be removed. Again, this is the only facilities policy that had anything related to this. None of the other ones did.
Okay, then my last question is, I think we, if I remember right, when I asked my questions in my email, there was a, a policy we're reverting back to the standard MSBA language one?
Yeah, I'll defer to Holly for that one.
Yes, so where this stemmed from is in the fall, I had our PTO and PTC leaders in the district reach out to me. The way that our current policy was written or is written binds one of those groups or prevents one of those groups from being able, from being able to recruit and advertise and send things home with students the way the others do. So our elementaries are PTO and our middle school is PTC. And so I kind of tried to look at, well, you know, why, why the policy is the way it is. I reached out to MSBA, Susan Goldammer and, and asked her and she said, you know, I'm not sure why it was altered, but you don't have the standard MSBA policy. And, and I asked, well, why, why would that be? And she said, well, I'm not sure, but why would you want to tie the hands of your organizations that are trying to support your schools? And so her recommendation was that we go back and adopt MSBA as a standard policy for this.
So let me ask this question. So one of the things that came out of our other policy was that meant the Boy Scouts couldn't, couldn't put stuff in the backpacks that Girl Scouts couldn't and a bunch of other people couldn't put stuff. So now will this, now will this policy change now allow the Boy Scouts and the Girl Scouts to start putting stuff in the backpacks on the way home or will they still be prevented, prevented from doing that?
Um, so they would, um, it, it depends. So Boy Scouts in particular, so all of our external organizations would still have to go through the normal protocol of the flyers that Morgan puts out every Friday, but the, I guess the groups affiliated with the district would be able to advertise in, in that way. So what we were running up against or what they were running up against is, for example, they wanted to do like a, a 5K, but their, their only way to put, to send things home, like to fill out the sheets and turn in for the students to be able to participate, they weren't able to do that the way the policy was written. So Boy Scouts kind of have their own rules too and in a different policy, but if we were to go to MSBA's policy. But, um, if we were to go to MSBA's policy, um, the way it's written, I believe they could go ahead and send things home with students.
So may I ask the principals a question? So, principal, so now that we changed this, is this going to cause more stress on the teachers now that you gotta start putting more stuff in the backpacks for the kids to go home? Or is this, uh, adoption of this policy going to cause any operational issues that, because before, you know, we restricted it and that's why we made those policy changes so you didn't have to do that. Now people revert back to this, are you going to have more, uh, issues with what people want to put in the backpacks? Is that going to cause you concerns?
Personally, at the, at the elementary level, for me, no, I don't think so. I, parents are used to take home folders coming home every single day at the elementary level. Look, that's a form of communication in the elementary level anyway, and so, no, I don't think so. Not, not from my end.
I agree with her. And I think Dawn would too.
And Taylor?
Uh, middle school level, if you get kids to get things out of the backpack. I think it is a positive change as well. If we could get information in hands of our kids and families of how to keep kids involved and stuff going on in their community, I think that's gonna have a positive.
I remember back when we changed this, it was because someone was abusing it. And that, that happens a lot with policy, you know, people abuse, abuse something and then you try to, to, uh, keep that from happening. So that, that's what happened, it was abused. And, um, some of the group that was wanting, a particular group that was wanting to send stuff home all the time was not really affiliated with the school. I mean, it, you know, the kids were in it, but it just, so that's the reason that we had changed it.
And I just want to make sure reverting back, you know, are you prepared for what if an individual group or something wants to start, you know, doing that a lot more? As long as you're okay with, uh, you know, doing it, I don't have an issue with changing the policy back, but I'm just forewarning you that once that, you make that change, that's definitely additional work on you and, and your staff. So I just want to forewarn you that.
Austin and Mary, couldn't we have Amy or Holly or somebody else create an administrative procedure on how to deal with those instances based on this policy?
Yeah.
I, I, they, they probably could. I mean, again, it'd have to go, go through MSBA and it would have to be added to the policy.
Because, I mean, we, I appreciate the, the background of why we removed, we were speculating on why that page was missing from the, from the standard policy. And I'm, I'm the first one to put in MSBA standard policy, so I appreciate that background.
All right, so as long as the principals aren't, uh, against it, I'm, I'm okay with it.
At the time, it really did cause a hardship on the Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts in particular when they were doing their drive for kids to join, you know, that they, and they came to us and, and said, this is hurting our enrollments, so anyway.
It's been mentioned multiple times over the years, multiple times.
Yeah, based on what I heard, I think I would just, I would recommend it with this particular one, it needs to be an administrative procedure created to, to mitigate that future recurrence of whatever organization was abusing it 10 years ago.
I don't even think that, I don't think that organization is even around anymore.
All right, I have to ask my questions. Thank you for answering them. Anything else before we, uh, then, thank you Kyle for leading that conversation.
Appreciate the, uh, the heads up.
He really tried to throw it at everybody.
Hey, gotta give you practice. Anyway, I need a motion to approve the policy committee updates to the various policies listed?
So moved.
Second?
There's a motion and second, any more discussion? All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? And just FYI, I was trying to throw Beth under the bus, but she threw it over here.
We know.
All right, next one is board self-evaluation. I forgot Elizabeth to prompt the questions. Which ones did I point out that we wanted to talk about? Do you have? Can you look at that, please? Okay, you got it. So Mary, you want to just, I forget which questions we, uh, which ones I, I.
Q8, Q11, Q15, Q16.
So question, so question A.
Question A?
Yeah, so this one right here, you know, it looks like from what I, my analysis of it is that the board doesn't think we're getting enough information about how professional development is, is impacting, um, student achievement. Is that? And so the question to those who disagreed, and I don't know who you are.
I'm one of them.
I'm one of them.
Okay, so what do you need, what do you need from the administration to move this to an agree?
Yeah, so when I see building level data, I mean, yes, that includes, uh, student achievement and, and things related, related to that, but really it could be any data that's being used for professional development. And I guess just for me, I, when I try to think of artifacts and examples of what is presented during board meetings, I'm just struggling to think of something that is data-specific of anything at a building level and then what staff are taking from a professional development standpoint to address that. And I'm sure it's out there. I, I'm sure it's being done, I'm just not seeing it necessarily presented. So it's not being presented, how can the board ensure that it's, it's happening?
Yeah, I would just piggyback on that. Obviously PD is happening. We know that, um, our educators are, are continuing to, to learn and hone their craft, but, um, just something that points to, you know, we are being specific on offering PD on X because we've seen a gap in our student achievement here or whatever it may be. You know, would be simple, uh, I say simple enough, but, um, you know, just something about that because like Kyle said, I know it's happening and I know it's, um, being done, um, you know, um, purposefully. I just don't know that I'm aware of those dots connecting.
Can I comment real quick?
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, I think you have included some of those pieces in your updates to us, um, specific to professional development, I think. But, but my main comment was, I think we have requested to add an annual review of professional development, um, annually to our board agendas. I think I'm remembering that correctly. We have not had that previously, um, but we decided that was one of the sort of program reviews, if you will, that we wanted to see on an annual basis.
I think you're right, Beth.
Uh, she's a hundred percent right. I was gonna say the same thing. There's too much writing on it. Yeah. A brief one, it doesn't need to get crazy, but what are they doing and why are we, why are they doing it?
I will say also, we are looking, um, we're investigating, looking at different, um, evaluation programs that we can actually evaluate across the district and building where our lowest areas or room opportunity, um, where we need professional development. And we can actually look at that data-wise at the building level and across the district to know where our lowest areas are and then where our highest areas are to celebrate. So that way we can focus professional development, not only at an individual level, you know, through individual feedback, but also where we can allocate our dollars for professional development based on the data that we're seeing and our principals are seeing throughout the buildings.
Okay, what was the next question I identified?
Eleven.
Eleven? So, I, I think I'm the, I don't know if I disagreed with this one, but I don't know if this is the, um, you know, what reports we're receiving to show this. I mean, the strategic plan, I'm assuming would be the, the, the facilities and stuff like that. Uh, I know six of us agreed with it, one of us didn't. And I'm kind of curious as to, um, you know, what, what we're doing. I mean, I mean, obviously we haven't done a facilities update since, so I think that's, that's part of this one, I think. Does anybody want to add anything else to this one?
So when I, when I read strategic plan goals, I, I think of everything, just not the, the master plan for facilities, but also CSIP actions that are in work and all of the building principals highlight CSIP goals that they're trying to measure themselves to and report monthly data that, um, they're, they're presenting to the board. So those are the artifacts that I think satisfy that, but if it's more of a wanting to see more progress on all the strategic plan goals, including facilities, then, um, then maybe there's something to expand there in a meeting or two a year or something.
All right, anything else on this one? Okay, next one, please.
So awesome, I mean, is there some, I mean, if you, if you disagree on that.
Well, I, I think, I think that the, the issue is, I mean, Berger left us with a, you know, and may, maybe it's, it's too soon, maybe I was being too, too harsh or whatever, but the issue is, you know, we, you know, now, you know, we got the RSP thing coming up and, you know, I don't know if I was too, too soon on this one or not, but, you know, I, and we haven't really looked, updated our master plan in terms of, uh, the buildings and stuff. Like, for instance, we're doing the, the four-room addition east, um, you know, now that that's being done, I mean, should, should we be looking at the master plan again? We haven't really, you know, talked about a goal setting, you know, in terms of, you know, actually sitting down and just having a conversation about goals and stuff like that, so. But anyway, that's just, you know, where my head was when I answered the question, so.
So the, the reports from RSP more than likely will probably turn into an, an annual event moving forward, so I would recommend that a minimum, reviewing the master plan on an annual basis and if we think it needs to be biannually with the amount of growth that the district's gonna experience in the next five to 10 years, I mean, at least once a year is.
I, I don't know, maybe I was being too harsh on this one, that, because it's only been six months, seven months since Amy started, so. All right. Next one. So this one, um, I, I don't, I never get any information on, you know, the benefits. I mean, I know we pay a hundred percent for the employee, um, and we pay, you know, and then if you're a family, you have to pay to get some information, you have to pay to get, um, family coverage. But other than that, um, you know, I, I don't know where our, what our long-term compensation plans are in terms of like, you know, we, we identified in our CSIP, you know, like, we're number one at, um, hiring new teachers, but as we get, go to the bottom right, we fall behind. I, I really haven't seen any plans to fix that. Even when Berger was here, I don't think I, you know, we really saw anything there either, so I'm not pinning that on, on our, on our new administrators or anything. I think that's just been a, you know, we know it's there, um, but really what's been our plan to fix it? You know what I'm saying?
I also put disagree on this one for, um, I don't, I don't know that I know of any, like, what our insurance packages are, what are offered to staff members. And then also, um, I was surprised to hear that, um, we had done away with a tuition reimbursement, um, program for, for our teachers, um, just by talking to a teacher one day. So I think all of those things, um, come into play as far as like what, um, and again, this is just a ward survey on what, I'm, like, I've carefully reviewed everything. I don't, um, I don't need to be in the weeds on stuff, but just be able to talk about it at a 30,000-foot view. And then I know we've talked about this last year as far as having a salary schedule available earlier, um, to, uh, help with teacher recruitment so that we know what we're able to offer, um, folks earlier.
Does anybody else have anything else they want to add to this one?
So we reviewed the insurance packages for staff annually. And we reviewed the, going into last year, we, a couple months ago, we reviewed insurance and, uh, for the changes with consortium and everything. We a hundred percent did that, or am I just banking this up in my head? We reviewed the insurance for just the employee, employee spouse, family.
We did that.
That would've been on a, I think, a presentation.
Yes, it was a presentation, so we, we, we reviewed the benefits, um, and we review compensation annually with, with the, with the 40-step schedule that we currently have.
Well, well, we review it, but the thing is, though, we don't have a plan to fix it.
Our strategy.
We don't have a strategy to fix it.
And that's what I'm alluding here to. So is what you and Erin saying is you want to see more of like a two, three-year plan versus annual reviews of, uh?
Yeah, so, so again, we, we review it, but there's, but the issue is, we, we never fix it.
So you guys want more of a plan then?
Yeah, I think so.
So that's the solution to this, so.
Yeah, I think that's my.
And I think Erin mentioned the other things that we're doing. I mean, oh, maybe tuition reimbursement or what else are we doing for retention? I, I, I don't want to get too crazy, but.
Hi.
I requested, um, I think not long after I, I got on board or joined the board to see more information on benefits and I believe Dr. Berger sent me some sort of document that showed all of our different benefits, so insurance, time off, all these things compared to lots of other school districts. I don't know if that rings a bell or if that's something that we get regularly.
I've never seen that, but it would be great if we could.
Yeah, it's a good document.
Because it's getting to that point in teacher recruitment where we have to be creative, right?
Right.
So putting that all in front of us.
Okay, the next question, Elizabeth. Anybody have anything else on this one before we move on? Can you scroll a little bit so I can read it?
Oh, sorry.
For those of you that neither agreed or disagreed, do you got any additional comments?
Oh, I think I neither agreed or disagreed on this one. Um, and not, again, like, it's kind of hard because there's a part of it that, like, we have one employee and so some of this kind of seems like maybe it's getting a little too weedy. We definitely hold our superintendent accountable, um, but I guess when I was reading this, I was thinking like, you know, I, I don't see building, um, principal administrator evaluations, nor do I think I need to. But, so maybe that's why in aligning what the, um, evaluation says to, um, their, their building, um, improvement goals.
Yeah, so on this one, and Heidi and Beth, you're gonna have to help. Reach back in the memory bank here a little bit. I'm, I'm pretty sure that we went back and forth a little bit on this one because on one hand, yes, the Board of Education has one employee and that's a superintendent, but then on the other hand, the specifics that are being stated in this question, is our district leadership team upholding, supporting CSIP goals and are they driving for retention of highly qualified staff? It's, you know, there, there's, there's a benefit to that as well. And I think we, we just ultimately decided that that benefit outweighs the concern of the board maybe reaching a little too far down into the.
I think we reworked it to literally say, we hold the superintendent accountable for these things.
Correct.
And being that we truly do hold her accountable for making sure our principals are, you know, making our goals.
Yeah.
So that's where I think we ended up with it. It's a little wordy, but I think it started twice as long.
No, that, that's fine, though, I, I'm just telling you that was kind of what was in my head, um, on that, but, um.
And that wasn't the only question that was like that. There were a bunch and we probably threw out the vast majority of them, but this one. the vast majority of them, but this one was just different.
We felt like we want her to make sure they are doing what they're supposed to be doing and supporting our goals.
I don't think I need to see their evaluation.
No, no.
But, like, when we do the rehires, we get a summary. So we are getting, we, you know, we get a summary of the good, the bad, and ugly.
Yep.
So we do.
Get an overview.
But is that overview enough to ensure that evaluation of building principles, support of C SIP goals, and future retention of all the work that's involved?
That's so wordy.
Okay, anyone on this question? Is that the last one?
Yes.
Does anybody have any question they would like to review?
Well, maybe spend another minute on this one.
Okay.
It's, four members saying either agree or disagree, so what is the artifact? Or how, how do you agree to this question?
I don't know, I guess that's a, that's a good question. I think, I think the, just making sure that when we're having the good, bad, and ugly conversations, it's aligned to C SIP goals versus personality.
Okay, so how do you ensure that?
Well, I don't know, because that's getting too weedy. I don't know.
Now, okay, and then.
No, I'm honestly, yeah.
I would really like to know from MSBA what their recommendation to school boards are, considering they are, were the genesis of this question.
Original artists of this.
Yes.
Yeah, good question.
I mean, we felt good about it, because we want to know that she's, that it's happening, but how? Because you're right.
I guess that's why this evaluation tool is good, so we can have this conversation.
So Austin, I think I would like us to, I mean, I would recommend that we potentially reach out to MSBA in this particular question, because it is not verbatim, but it was crafted off of a question that they had in their 120 standard question board survey.
I'm sorry, I would almost argue that we can pull this one, because we know that our superintendent has the responsibility to ensure that the C SIP goals are being implemented and to evaluate principals and their role in that. So I would almost say that's, it's just kind of a given, you know, that's a focus, and we could pull this question.
And I, at the end of the day, I'd be okay with that, but if it stays, then how do you ensure?
I'm going to go dig up the old one, but I'm with, with Beth, and I'm okay pulling it. But I am going to look it up, just, just to know.
Maybe, maybe we missed some verbiage that might make it make sense. I'm telling you, it was twice that long ago. It was ridiculous. There was a lot of words.
Okay, any other questions anybody wants to discuss? Okay, thank you very much for that conversation. Greenhouse bid, Amy?
I'll actually turn this part over to Dr. Wade.
Yeah, so over the last month or so, we've been out to bid for the greenhouse project. We were hopeful, or we were hoping to get two bids, one from a different company. We had conversations with them during the bid process, but did not get a bid from them. Did get a bid from MTI Greenhouse. You can see the bid price in there, start date, estimated completion date. It should be known that this is the total, I, I want to call it like the scoops the nuts, like, they're going to do everything for the concrete, do everything for it. Also, we are, Veronica and Kelsey have been working on a grant, so some of this money that's allocated for this is already involved in a grant. We do have some other money that, if you remember, we've talked about setting aside some money for like, refrigerators, TVs, that kind of thing. We have about 200,000 of that, that we would push towards this as well. So we're looking at probably 100,000 or so. We might have to take out a fund for or something to make this happen. But, yeah, that's our bid, MTI.
And we've done Veronica's checks.
So two people that have been working with them, one is Orchard Farms, so we talked to them the other day. The other company that we thought was going to bid actually started the project for them and could not make some things happen, so MTI is coming in to finish that project. And then I did talk to Dr. LaRue at Hillsborough. They went out to bid. And they had two bids, one from MTI, that was their low bid at 438. And then they had a bid from the other company that did not bid ours, and they were 455. Similar-sized projects.
Has Hillsborough started that?
He said that, so this was in their September board meeting. They have just barely broken ground, because they started right after, or right before Christmas break, kind of thing. So they're having some weather issues. Both talked highly of MTI and the person that we're dealing with, with MTI.
Any additional questions for Jeremy?
I would like to thank Kelsey for writing the grants and capturing the grant in addition to running that FCA program, all the ad classes to bring this cost down. So, and, and partnering with Veronica to, to work all of this stuff at the central office level. So just wanted to say thanks to her, although she's not here anymore.
I'm excited we're going to have so many kids using it.
Yeah, no kidding.
And I'm also excited that, you know, we chose to put the addition on the ballot, because everything we see just means things are going up, guys. Things are going up.
Okay, any more questions? And I think the recommendation from the administration is to accept the MTI greenhouse bid as presented.
So moved second.
It's a motion and second. Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? I heard seven zero. LCA facility exception request. So we have Doug here tonight, and I'm just going to let him explain. We all got an email from him on January 29th, 2025, assuming you know already. So I'm just going to let Doug take about next three to five minutes, explain what he wants to do. And then we can ask him questions for our board policy, for, you know, when the members of the community put stuff on the agenda, and then we can discuss it and go from there. So Doug, you want to take the next three to five minutes, please?
Sure. And different, sitting on the side, I, I appreciate you guys listening to me, and I'm sorry that I'm adding three to five or all the minutes to, to this meeting, but I appreciate you taking some time to listen to me today. And so, you know, it falls into a lot of what I've heard tonight, you know. We've had Matt talking a lot about some community leaders and some people who are doing community stuff and some stuff with policies, starting a, well, first of all, step back a little bit. You know, that's one of the things I've, I've loved about the district, is that it is part of the community. Rice, the school district, and the community are almost interchangeable. And for years, I sat on that side of this, and LCA was its own entity and was not part of that. And one of the things that I wanted to do when I took over there was to make that like two schools, one community. And put us as part of the community, since we have a school there. This year alone, I know that, you know, I'm talking to Stuart, the Rice City Parks Department. We opened up our gym for basketball practices for the youth program that was happening here. That was primarily to build a basketball program, and we talked about wrestling earlier. And they were trying to get the community on board with building up our basketball and having feeder basketball, and having our kids playing. The gym space is a premium, and we let them practice there in charge, and because I think that's a community service. And it benefits the community. And so I guess that is a big part of mine, is that, that in my time here, I know there were times when Rice City and Liberty Christian Academy had kind of an adversarial relationship, to put it nicely. I don't want that to be the case. I'm trying to put us part of the community and build bridges. And so I appreciate already, you know, talking to Amy and, and going through the process. The ability, again, your policy KG says that we can use that track as soon as it's not being used by your athletes, but the ability to also use like massive hurdles, I appreciate. What I am requesting and asking is that you waive the part of that that just says, we've got to wait until you get finished, we'll get out of school three. Trying to corral, you know, kids and find stuff to do, especially once you don't need something to do. That was one of the things I talked to Austin, that we'll, you know, we'll have study halls or do things. Not every kid needs that. And try to corral some kids. I know there was a concern as well that we would be in the way of middle school kids, and it would be too crowded. I've got 23 kids signed up. I coached track and field at Winsfield for years with middle school, and we had 300 kids on the track. And I would guarantee you that our kids would not inhibit or interrupt anything that was going on with the middle school program. So basically, I am asking that, for us to come over and start at about 3:30, we would be totally out of the way. We wouldn't bother anything. We would take care of the stuff. I'm really kind of just hoping that we can create a situation, you know, two schools, one community, and have that kind of relationship. But I, I do understand policies, I do. But I also understand, if, if sat up there and had meetings with, with people where, for certain reasons and in certain situations, we could waive those. That's what I'm asking for here.
We're texting, we'll have a question here real quick.
Okay.
Any questions for Doug?
I don't know if these are Doug questions or Amy questions, sorry.
Well, go ahead, just ask him, and we'll answer.
Transportation, how are your kids going to get over?
Jog.
I love it.
Do the warm-up. And, and another question I think that came up was, you know, what about, you know, our volun, our people or our coaches, you know, around your kids?
Background checks.
Background checks. So there's, there's myself, one of the coaches. I have one other person who's going to help me, who is also a staff member. I would be more than happy to supply both of our background checks if needed.
That was my secondary question that I knew belonged to you.
So, yeah, I would be more than happy. So there's just two of us going to do it. Both are staff members, we both have background checks. I'd be happy to supply both of those.
This is my comment, and I've heard this from coaches, from track coaches, that it was so hard to practice with the high school and the middle school together. And it got chaotic, and it was, just didn't work out well. And I think they're very excited that this year, the high school will have, have their place to practice, and the middle school will have their place to practice. So that's my concern, the, you know, the, the intermingling of it, you know.
And that's valid. I, I think by the time that, that we would arrive, you know, they practice till four, you know, I would think we'd probably arrive at like 3:30. We would be totally out of the way of any of the event-specific stuff. It might just be on the backside of the track, trying to do some warm-ups and be out of lanes. And, and if they were trying to do anything, we would get out of line. And that's just what I would guarantee, and I would work with the track coaches or Mr. Evans to assure that. Because I have 23 kids, so it's not as if I'm bringing over a whole bunch. And I don't, and I don't know how many will end up doing it after practice a few times.
Amy, to your offer telephonic equipment, how was that equipment expected to get in and out? Are we going to have someone on site, or are we having them put it in and out? I mean, what's the plan?
It stays out.
It stays out, okay. So it's not anything that would be moving?
The high jump mat, we just need to be recovered.
Okay.
And then the hurdles stay out.
Insurance, why, why, Doug, the, the school's insurance, how does that factor in?
They still prefer.
They have their insurance.
They have a requirement. I really do like the idea of two schools, one community. I mean, I've tried to work or do things with LCA in the past, and it hasn't gone well. And I don't even know the reason. It's whatever. I hesitate to do anything against policy because of who else might ask. And I know that's a crazy thing, but you've been there. It, it scares me a little bit. I, we have policy for a reason, and using facilities while our kids are there is, you know, why we have that policy. So, you know, it's just protection for kids, but, I mean, it's a school. So I'm, I'm having a hard time with that one, but then also it's policy. I'm having a hard time, Doug, sorry.
I understand, I mean, but, you know, this, you know, my only thing is it's kids from, it benefits kids from two different places, and it benefits kids throughout the community.
May I offer a question?
I just understand your point.
So when I review policy KG, there's a section about district-sponsored activity. And within our high school, we have an organization, Fellowship for Christian Athletes. And I think there might be a way for that sponsorship of those kids to work with others in the, in the community, who happen to be students at Liberty Christian, to create that district-sponsored activity that follows policy.
Okay, I mean, I, if we can follow policy and work together and maybe open up new relationships, I'm not 100% against that.
How many of your students actually live in Rice City?
It is about 50 to 60%.
50%, 50 to 60% of the 23 that are going to do the track?
No, I don't know about that number.
Yeah, that's.
I think that's, that's the number she's asking.
I, I would have to go.
No, are you asking, are you asking about the school? Or are you asking about the track team?
Both.
Oh, okay.
Both.
I mean, I, I don't have exact addresses or the map lines, but I mean, you know, I mean, we're primarily out of Warren County. I mean, that's the majority of our kids are Warren County to some level. And a lot live in Rice City.
Any other questions? So Amy did some research on the FCA. You want to?
Sure, so we, we asked an attorney that question, and they said that for FCA to co-sponsor the LCA track practice, FCA and their district faculty sponsor would have to be present at each track practice that LCA attends.
So who is our FCA sponsor? Do we know who that is? Pardon me? Would, would that coach be willing to attend every single track practice? Well, no, but he would, as a FCA sponsor. Yeah, so he would have, he would have to commit to going to track practice.
And he would be staying?
He's no longer a track coach, but he runs different, he runs weights and spring trainings for the football team. So I don't know, that would have to be passed on directly.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that would have, you know, in order for that to follow policy, that would have to be.
When does track practice start?
We plan on starting next week. I mean, I'd like to go and put anyone else out if we're working on somebody else. It's not, that, that's not my intent, to be to go down that path and make somebody else do more work. I don't look that.
We're really talking about 30 minutes here? At which field, at the current high school track?
The old one.
Yeah, I mean, the old high school, yes, that's one, I'm sorry. Okay.
Any other, any other, my only, my only concern is, you know, I, I thought about this, and Doug and I have talked about it. You know, the issue is, we're talking about 30 minutes here, 4 o'clock, right? So instead of 3:30, the kids would have to start at 4 o'clock. You know, from a policy perspective, I, I don't understand why that 30 minutes makes such a big deal. a big deal, you know, because we're allowing everything else, we're allowing free use of the mats, the facilities and everything else. I just, you know, just to be consistent, I just, you know, I'm struggling with why 30 minutes makes such a big deal. And maybe you can help me understand why 30 minutes is such, it's a.
I think it's, I mean, it's just, I mean, it's just supervision of kids and kid wrangling and trying to find something to do with them for, you know, half hour work, which is not, which is never, you know, easy when there's nothing for some of them to do. And so it's just a challenge and then that would probably push practices back later and have kids out later and I think that's pretty much the reason, you know, I'd just like to end school and get dressed and jog over and get started.
I, how many track coaches do we have?
Can we ask them how that would?
Doug, I want to, I want to say, can we try it for a week and have an open conversation with say two coaches and four kids? Because I don't want it to be saying, oh, the coaches don't want you there, Doug, you caused a problem and then you blame them or something like that.
Doug puts us in the policy problem. We have a policy and if we don't follow policy, it's going to come back and bite us later on.
Sorry, about, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
I'll revert back to the district-sponsored activity, it doesn't necessarily just to the F C A, do any of the track coaches sponsor any kind of other group that these kids could join. I mean, if we're going to, we're going to follow policy, we might as well follow what policy allows. And it allows a district-sponsored activity.
I like Kyle's flexibility. I mean, it's not, it, what's the policy allow? Yeah, I'm just going to quiet down.
Again, I don't want you to think I'm causing problems or I'm going to get upset here. I'm just, you know, it's just a request and idea of where you're coming from here, I certainly do. There's a reason for, for policy, but then there's also oftentimes reasons for exceptions in the way that which.
Beth, you've been, you have any questions?
Well, I suggested that we could try it on a, on a trial basis for a specific amount of time and then revisit it to see how it impacts our kids and coaches and see how it's working for everyone.
So when does tracks, when does track season start?
Middle school track starts next week.
And when does your track start?
Next week.
And y'all go to school five days a week, you'd have practice five days a week?
We would not have it on Wednesdays.
We'd not have it on Wednesdays, we don't have, we have track practice five days a week.
I will say, as much as I also love two schools, one community, I have, I, I just don't ever want our kids to be in a, in a situation, and I know, like, right now, we have, we know the principal, we know the administrator over there and we have trust with that, but I, you know, administrators change and I don't want to set us up for, opening us up for other, opening up a precedent or what happens if Doug decides to retire for real and the new principal is not a track coach and, you know, like, there's just a whole lot of ifs that, and again, like, this is not in our policy. So my recommendation would be to stick with Amy's recommendation, have L C A come over at 4 o'clock, do another lap around West Woods to eat up that other half hour or whatever to, to just make sure that we're continuing to align with what we know we can stick with and hold true to for whatever administrators change or circumstances change.
I think those are really solid points.
Dave, you've been silent.
I have, I'm torn, because I definitely realize the benefits that the more you can get students involved in any aspect of extracurricular activities, the chances of the more successful they're going to be after school. I also realize the, that we have to protect our own students. But I do think, and I don't know the exact details of it, but I believe that Warren paired up with Holy Rosary to play basketball, anyone know about that?
Yeah.
And, and I think that's all been good, positive things, is that correct?
I know they do.
What facilities was that at? Was that Holy Rosary or was it?
No, it was at, it was at.
I think they go to the.
But they're playing on the same team, correct?
I believe so.
Yes, that's what they're doing.
I think they intermingled kids from.
Holy Rosary's going, yeah. They intermingled the kids, yeah. So the Holy Rosary kids actually joined the Warren team basketball team.
And it's not the same, it's different, but I think it's worked, I think it's worked well for, for both groups and I think we're getting along very well with that. So I'm not 100% opposed to, to try it with L C A and seeing where we get on, you know, not a permanent, not a lifetime agreement, but maybe on a trial basis and see how we get along and, and maybe it works and maybe it doesn't.
I think this is a great opportunity for running club to perform if there isn't one, you have a track coach that's a sponsor and you have L C A folks that have part of that running club, come over and run whenever.
We'll all agree.
Yeah, per the policy. But you'd have to engage the track coaches to, but I think there's a way per the policy.
Can, can we make that a request? Can we direct someone to get creative and do something per policy?
I think, I, Kyle's opinion, I think the language is there. Just folks need to come together and, and make it happen.
So what would be your, what would be your motion?
My motion would be to approve the current request based on Dr. Salvo's recommendation and then strongly recommend some folks to review the policy again and see what it, it allows, because I think it can be done based on the current policy.
So are you okay with if they come up with something that the policy allows, going ahead and allowing that before the next meeting, right? Just for time, for the fault of the policy, of course, yes.
If policy allows it, then, yeah.
Okay, so originally, so starting out, it would be, what I heard you say is that L C A, starting out, wouldn't be able to start until 4 o'clock until they figured out how to make it work underneath policy and then that, then they could start sooner. Is that what I'm hearing you say?
And I think everybody is happy in that, in that situation.
And we start to build relationships between our schools, which I hope is big picture that way, when it does become a different administrator, it doesn't matter.
So administrators, you're going to have to lip at this decision. What's your recommendation based upon what Kyle's suggesting?
I'm just back, it's, this is going to affect your kids, so what's your, what's your feeling? Do you have a feeling?
I, for me personally, I think whatever we can do to keep kids involved, I moved to Rice City because I like the community and I stayed here because I like the community, so whatever we can do for our kids, I think is a good thing. However, I do think that living within policy is important, but in terms of my 60 kids add 23 kids, I don't think that that's, it's going to make a bit of a difference in terms of the chaos of the track. I don't think that the 23 kids that Doug is potentially bringing over is going to cause havoc.
The folks that haven't had input into this yet are the actual track coaches, that, you know, they're the ones that are going to have to, you know, you know, have to deal with this, because that's where the boots are going to hit the road. I, I think if it were me, start out with Amy's suggestion, you know, 4 o'clock, let them show up and then let's, you know, talk to the track coaches, see what we can do within policy and then if they can come to some sort of mutual understanding, then loosen it up. Start tight and loosen, because it'd be a lot, it's going to be a lot harder if we allow it, start at 3:30 and then it's not working, we have to tighten it up. That's going to be a lot more difficult than it is if we start tight and then we find out that, oh, it's not such a big deal and then we loosen it up. That, to me, that's, that's the, that's the way to go. Start tight, loosen. I don't know what your thoughts are to that.
Bottom line for me is, how can we expect our administrators and teachers to follow policy if we aren't? So if, if we can work it out within policy, but we can't go, I don't feel we can go against policy. It's a, it would be a bad precedence to set for the rest of our school district.
We can always rewrite the policy too. I mean, we, we are the, we, we own the policy. The policy is, the board is the owner of policy. I would recommend that.
But Kyle did just come up with two creative ideas and we are definitely not the smartest people in the room, so I expect that other people, smarter than us, can come up with some creative ideas to stick within policy, support all kids within our community and start an ongoing relationship that I hope stays out of, a good relationship. So I, if we can do it within policy, y'all are way creative, way more creative than us.
The wildcat and the old running club.
But that's not going to put additional work on our staff members to try to come up with or create a new club that we have to pay a stipend for.
That's why you would want to have the existing coaches be the sponsor of it.
And pay them more because now they're going to.
What extra do you think they have to do?
I don't know, but now they've, I don't know. I just think.
Their meeting is the track practice.
Okay. Why?
So it sounds like we want to make a motion to approve it under the current policy right now, it will start time at 4 o'clock, and then the request is that we involve our administrators, our coaches, see if there's a creative solution that we can come up with that works with the current policy, or if they have a recommendation to adjust wording in the current policy, that's our request, to, to make that, that analysis and come back to us with a recommendation. But as of tonight, we want to approve it under current policy to get it adjusted.
Or what, Amy? I, I think we're going that direction and, yeah, yep, you nailed it.
Did you just make that motion?
Wow, that is long.
So Elizabeth, write that down and read that back.
I think I would want to put that, so I want to put at the end something with allowing modifications, giving Dr. Salvo the authority to modify those restrictions, is that kind of what you're getting at or am I off the target here?
No, the, the restrictions are put in place to adhere to board policy.
Right.
What's being discussed is the actual language of board policy and what's allowed in it.
Right, but.
So it's not changing policy.
Hold on a second.
She's allow, you're allowing them to modify the patient to the plan, not the.
Work for what you said.
I think what they're saying is they want us to try to find a way to live within policy K G, so.
Right, but to do that, you, they have to give you this, without having other board need, they have to give you the authority to modify that if we come up with a creative solution.
Right, to develop a solution under current policy or to recommend a change to current policy if needed?
Yeah, she shouldn't need them modified.
Yeah, if they find something under current policy, the board doesn't.
Modify the conditions.
Conditions that she's.
That's what I'm talking about, modifying the conditions. So giving her the authority to modify those conditions is what I'm talking about.
So this is what would happen, we would.
Based on research.
We would, we would approve this based on the conditions Dr. Salvo presented and they would start at 4:00 P. M. and that would continue in perpetuity until they find a solution that's within policy. So if they, if the club, if there isn't a solution they can find within policy, then it stays at 4:00 P. M. If they can find a solution, then they can start right there. All, all I would say is that I believe that there is a solution within policy, just some extra steps have to be.
Got to go a little more for it.
So does 4:00 P. M. have any conditions or?
No, the, the conditions that she initially, that Amy initially.
I said.
Just, I, I want to work with Liberty Christian.
I just want to put that out there, but.
The 4 o'clock is when middle school practice ends. And so by policy, we could use it once, once, the, once the, once the school is no longer using it, which the practice ends at 4, then.
I don't think any of that needs to be in the motion, because if they adjust to roll under policy, there is no motion, there is no modification, there's nothing that needs to exist because now it rolls under policy.
That's right.
So whatever we determine now is just a temporary holding point if they can get creative.
Well, what she's, what she's agreeing to, we're not going to charge or anything.
Yeah.
Yes, that, that's what we're also going to approve from that is going to be, we're not going to charge.
Well, none of that language was on here.
This is getting really hard to add those conditions, so someone needs to write this out, I mean, because there are a lot.
So, so the motion, here's a, here's a motion I heard, motion to approve Liberty Christian facility use request per the conditions specified by Dr. Salvo with the stipulation that doctors, that the administration work on, is that Ken? I know what she's saying, she's saying basically, figure it out, I can do it under policy, is what she's saying.
The adminis- administr.
But none of that has to be part of the motion. None of that has to be part of the.
We're just directing them to find a way to get under policy so this temporary thing can end.
Well, it's not temporary, it's the, okay, so.
It is temporary if they can get under policy.
Sponsor right now. You want me to be a sponsor?
Okay.
So being a good board is really a tough time.
It's just, it's just approving, we're just approving the facility usage per the conditions by Dr. Salvo, that's it.
Yes.
Yeah, and then, then they can work together to figure out how to.
Yeah, that doesn't need to be in any.
All we are approving is literally what is on the screen right there.
Okay, and then you're, then you're being directed to see what you can do, create them underneath the policy to make it work better.
As time allows.
Yes, as time allows.
So I'll make the motion as presented here.
So the motion is to approve Liberty Christian facility use request per the conditions specified by Dr. Salvo, that's the motion.
Yes.
Is there a second?
Yes, second.
There's a motion, second, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I heard seven, zero. Okay, thank you.
Creativity, call him.
So the next item on the agenda is the M S B A advocacy day, which is March 11th.
So you asked me to put this on here so we could see if what board members wanted to attend?
So who's, so who's going on March 11th? I know I am, you are.
I'm going to plan to.
I'm a 50/50 shot at the moment, I haven't on the dates.
Very.
When do we got to know by?
You said May 11?
March.
March.
Hmm. Yeah, tentatively.
I'm also tentative right now.
Okay, so, so what time we need to leave here to get to Jeff City?
What time you want to be in Jeff City by?
I think I have to be there at 9:00.
She's checking to see if we've received an official start time yet.
Yeah, and I know that we, do we?
No, we don't, do we pay something still?
No, we have to pay for it.
We do have to pay for it, so yeah, whenever the last day.
And I think the only ones I have registered may be Austin and Mary if I remember correctly. So maybe Amy could have to get that to check.
I'll need to register, but I'll be.
You're registered.
I don't care. I'll be spending the night at Jeff City.
Okay, so you're not going to drive up with us. The purpose of this, of this agenda item is to come up with the time we're all going to meet here in the parking lot.
Yeah.
And then.
7:00 A. M., there you go.
Purpose of this agenda item for myself is to know when I have to tell you that I'm going or not.
They're not giving me a date, I've only gotten that one.
Okay, I'll let you know at the next one.
And then Elizabeth will send out a time when you need to be in the parking lot if you want to drive up with the group. Fair enough?
Sounds good. Sounds good.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is, I just wanted to put this out there because of the new high school, there's, we no longer can name the football field. So just, if you just want to scroll down. So this is the potential, the names of the stuff that we're going to auction off at the Bloom Gold Scholarship Auction. So just FYI, if anybody asks you, this is the stuff that we're going to auction off this year. And, and I know they had a conversation with Jackie, I think Morgan was part of that conversation. Who else was part of that conversation?
Jeremy, Morgan and I.
So this is, this was the list of items.
Is it the same number that we've always had?
Well, no, we've not been to football field this year.
But we added.
But we added.
Another high school.
Well, yeah, we added the old high school gym and then the practice gym.
Okay, that's great.
My recommendation though would be for the, when the, the four spectator seats, I would recommend that you divide that up between the sports, so one for football, one for basketball, one for baseball.
Yeah.
That's a really neat deal. I've seen it done in other communities and it works out well, but you might as well divide it up between the sports.
Right. You're gonna have different people bidding on different sports, probably make more money.
Yeah, well, well, the point about basketball is it will still be played at the old gym, right? Because next year, you know, depending the outcome of the, the bond issue, we may be playing basketball at that old gym.
Just to say, this does specify that it's to take place on the field. We didn't do any home court games and I believe the writing in the blue and gold packet is only for the home football field. Is that correct? Okay.
Uh, blue and gold packet's not done yet. FYI. It's totally not till first.
I just wanted to specify that.
Well, I, I think, I think what Dave's going with it is, you know, when you go to the basketball games, if you had a reserved seat, you know, that might, that might sell.
I like the idea of adding more if we still can, per each, you know, volleyball, basketball, baseball, football.
I don't know, I don't know if there's a big attendance.
Hey, then, you never know.
Well, I'm there.
You know, real judgmental about the sports over here, aren't we?
I'm not being judgmental.
Even if it's a, a paltry amount, it's money.
You have your marching orders? All right. Talk to Jackie. Okay. Next item on the agenda is the CSIP report. Any questions on the middle school? East? Central? I know Kyle had a question about the definition of floor.
No, I didn't have a definition, I did not have a question with definition. My question on if there was addition or remission to what was driving the board.
And we, we talked about it being illness. Early childhood and PAT? High school? Special ed? And West? Okay. Next item on the agenda is the community engagement evaluation. Dr. Salvo?
So we have the wonderful Morgan here that will go through this.
Sorry, now it's my time to speak. It's pretty similar to last year's because the best basis that I can give you guys currently is what's on our CSIP. So you'll see that, of course, the annual climate surveys are there and then our support organizations measuring attendance. So Jeremy Way touched on the climate surveys, was it back in November? We did see an uptick in question fifteen where parents felt that they did have more input. It was up eighteen percent. Parents did receive more information about school progress, that was up to twelve percent. So, we're also gonna work to tailor the climate survey next year to actually better measure how our community outreach and engagement is. I feel like we're pretty limited overall. I know the scope of the survey is in essence a complete look at how community engagement is, but like answering or asking more specific questions will help us give a better foundation. And then, of course, our participants and active support organization being the PTO, the PTC, the boosters, all of those things. It was really unique the past two years because our boards have almost filled all new people. So, as they keep saying, out with the old, in with the new, I like to say that those older folks have definitely laid a good foundation for our newer folks to come in and keep doing great things for our students. So I, along with many other people who were on those boards previously, worked really hard to refill those positions and of course recruit new parents. So we saw a slight uptick in participation at meetings. And our social media has seen over eight hundred followers district wide on all of our pages. So we're gonna keep working to increase our followers so we can get information out and celebratory things out via social media. So in essence, that's the whole thing. Do you guys have any questions?
No, it's great to see the increase in participation and attendance at all the support organizations and parents feeling like they have, have input. Thanks for letting me.
I will also speak to the KI policy. You guys adopting a more broad way for people to reach our students is really big. Our PTO, of course, as Holly said, that was one of their major concerns and I kept telling them, like, I want to work with you guys, this is our policy that we're working within. So I know that whenever I take that back to the March meeting, they're gonna be very elated that they're no longer limited and their job isn't as hard as volunteers to reach our kids. So, thanks for that.
That's great. That's a good practical application.
Thank you, Morgan.
Any other questions for Morgan? Okay, consent agenda, does anybody want to pull anything? Please note that we're approving the contract for the east addition. Okay. Hearing none, I need a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So I'm on second.
There's a motion and second. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I heard seven zero. In accordance with section six ten oh twenty-one of the Vice Statutes of Missouri, the R2 Board of Education will go into closed session to discuss, one, legal actions, three, personnel, and thirteen, individually identifiable personnel records. Need a motion to go into closed session?
Second.
Roll call time with Austin, yes?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Yes.
Yes.